Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith, and I'm here today with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Councilman Dan Lavelle, Councilman Bruce Kraus, Councilman Corey O'Connor, and we expect other members to join us. I want to thank Madam Clerk's office for setting these meetings up so quickly. And I'm here with Mike Straleek as well from our City Council Budget Office. We're going to begin briefly with Mike giving a brief comment about how we voted and why we voted, and then we're going to turn it over to Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle for a brief presentation that we really want to cover even though there's not a lot of people here. Come sit closer, please, and so that we can have a conversation. And we'll turn over the conversation, and then we'll adjourn the meeting.
Great. So a brief note about why we did what we did, or why council, sorry, I'm not elected, why the council had to pass the budget before we went on council recess. December of 2020, when we passed the 2021 budget, it was basically two six-month budgets. So the first six months, from January to June, contained a lot of cuts. 170 vacant positions were cut. About $14 million from elsewhere in the budget was cut. Now, the second six-month budget was the serious one, contained the serious, the potential to fire over 600 employees, just eliminate a whole lot of city services. The federal money came in just in time because the city is frankly, we were running out of money. So to make sure that federal money made it into our budget so we wouldn't have to lay people off when the fund balance ran out, council had to go ahead and pass something. In addition to just making sure nobody was fired, council had to put back into the budget various line items that were cut, all the positions that were frozen. I learned last week that DPW's landscaping budget is out of money. So if there's any storms and trees fall down, we couldn't have gone out and picked up those trees out of the roadway unless council did something to put money back into the budget. Also note that by law since 2005, it's been a five-year budget. So we weren't just putting money back to rehire the people that were fired, not just to put more money in the landscaping budget in 2021, but also that same money in 2022, and 2023, and 2024. So we've heard questions about why we had to do a four- or five-year plan. It's by law, and the 2021 budget that was passed with those horrible cuts contain those cuts that council just uncut. I could talk more, but yeah, we have a presentation.
Thank you very much. Is it better for me? We're joined by Erica Strausberger, Councilman of Coroner, sorry, everybody else. Is it better for me to stand, or is it better for me to sit to do this? You tell me. Your choice. All right, your DB guy. So I'm going to, there is a presentation that Councilman Lavelle and I will do. I'll do the initial part and make sure you have the handouts, and then he'll go into some detail, and then after that, we'll be able to answer specific questions. And the city of Pittsburgh's allocation of funding for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The COVID-19 pandemic created a fiscal emergency in the state, in the city of Pittsburgh. Without federal help, we would literally have run out of money and have to lay off probably a third of the workforce. The ARP money is designed to support the core functions of local government. Now, we are not the only government who receives these funds. The state, although they're not a local municipality, they receive money, and there are the three local municipalities, the county, the city, and the school district. And all of them have, and you know, this is, my thing is backwards, but that's okay. I can do it this way. COVID-19 triggered lost tax revenues, placing the city of Pittsburgh in a dire financial emergency. If we had not received additional monies by July 1st, we would have laid off 600 employees, firefighters, paramedics, some city services. Thankfully, in March 2021, the American Rescue Plan allowed the city to restore its 2021 budget and the required five-year plan. The American Rescue Act provided funds to those governments, as I talked about, is giving $380 million to the County of Allegheny, $335 million to the city of Pittsburgh, and $80 million to this school district. Now, the reason that's important is because each form of government forms a different function, performs a different function. The County of Allegheny, and that's a lot of people, when they try to compare Pittsburgh to other cities, you have to be very careful because all cities are not created equally. They're all created slightly different. Some cities have their own human services built in, like Philadelphia, which is a city and a county, does both the school district, it controls both the school district and it controls its human services. We do not, we're a second-class city, we do not control either. The County of Allegheny controls human services, criminal justice in the court system, district attorney, Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas, adult education through the Community College of Allegheny County, and the Board of Elections. The city of Pittsburgh and the school district, as we know, I can do that from my own head, the school district performs stuff for children and young adults. That's the function that the city schools do. We, the city of Pittsburgh, what we do primarily is public safety, fire EMS, code enforcement, public infrastructure, mobility, paving roads, all that sort of stuff. We do through PWSA drinking water, getting rid of lead, changing the pipes, all that sort of stuff. Their redevelopment authority does for sale housing, it does some affordable housing, but it creates the avenue for business, economic, and neighborhood development. And then certainly, the Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh does public housing and affordable housing. And of course, I talked about the school district already, because I'm doing this from my head, does early childhood initiative stuff, and it does education for children, youth, and young adults. Once they get, I think after 21 years of age, they're no longer eligible for services through the Board of Education. Now, the city is receiving a $335 million allotment. It comes to us in two pots of money, one this year, one next year. This year, we received, a few months ago, $167.5 million in 2021, and the same time next year, we received the exact same amount, $167.5 million. These funds, though, are extraordinarily tied to government initiatives. It has to be under contract and spent by December 31st, 2026, or we must return it. If it's not under contract, and specifically used by that date, they go back to the federal government. Now, the federal formula dictates the city receives funding to replace revenue lost by the pandemic. They determine how much revenue they thought we lost or were losing over that period of time, and is primarily to be used for operating expenses, to restore payroll, to avoid layoffs, and to fill positions necessary to fully operate the city. Now, the city created a trust fund to strengthen accountability and increase public transparency. So all the money went into the trust fund, and it will, over time, be parceled out according to this budget. And that will, of course, include more public hearings and more chances of the public to participate in this distribution of those funds. Now, these funds are specifically designed to be spent on things the city would normally spend money on in its regular course of business. That was the whole idea of the fund, was to replace the revenue that we lost so that we can continue services as needed. The funds are designed to be expended on essential city services, but because of the funding formula, there's a small amount of discretionary spending, money that we can, a little bit of it, that we can spend in specific ways. Federal best practices, and we've had a number of those, the city has had a number of those workshops, and it indicates that any discretionary spending be invested primarily in long-term capital improvements. In other words, best practice is do not spend this money on social services, because if you spend this money on social services, it'll be gone next year. If we, you know, if we all of a sudden feed 2,000 people, or we give rent be-pays to, not 2,000, 2 million people, whatever the number is, once we do that, there's no investment, there's no return on that investment. Certainly, those needs are significant, but once we spend it, that money is gone. But best practice says use this once-in-a-lifetime investment in capital things that will last the public five years, 10 years down the line. So the city's discretionary spending should be used for transformational purposes instead of transactional and temporary purposes, and the council took that very, very seriously. Significant ARP funds spent on nonessential programs or programs not substantially related to city's essential obligations could and would have significant unforeseen consequences because people don't really understand how the city works. Now, remember, these dollars are not going to be spent by themselves. They're going to be put in the city's budget over these next few years, and the city will spend it as part of its ongoing budgetary process. When we spend it as part of our budgetary process, anything we spend has implications on anything else, including police budgets, fire budgets, that we cannot just spend money without it having consequences. When the city of Pittsburgh spends budgetary money, it has consequences on everything else in the budget, and some of those things will be eventually beyond our control. So in order to make sure we do this, and to do this in a way that we believe has these long-term benefits, especially to communities of color, the city enacted the Equity First Spending Plan, and it did a couple of things. It accounts for the funds necessary to revert layoffs and job termination, so the first bunch of it goes to make sure we don't lay people off. It funds public infrastructure, lead water replacement, neighborhood recreation centers, and other quality-of-life centers. It prioritizes investment in communities and economic development projects in the city's block neighborhoods. Now, one of the things I think that people are unaware of, or really don't kind of think about, we have aging vehicles that pave our streets, and aging vehicles that plow our streets, and aging vehicles and materials that cut grasses, cut grass. Now, if these vehicles, first of all, the way that we do paving and plowing and those things, we do the roads that are heavily treched, that are heavily written on, transported first. So because of the amount of volume, Fifth Avenue is always going to get paved. Penn Avenue is always going to get paved because of the amount of traffic on it, right? Most of the roads in affluent communities are extremely high priority places. That's one of the reasons why they're taken care of so well. It's not because the community itself is wealthy, it's because the roads are essential to get to schools, to get to the University of Pittsburgh, to get to UPMC. When we, when those old machines break down, which they do, the places that don't get the share of services wind up being the places that are least populated, places like Homewood and Lorimer, which has lost 70 and 80% of the population. When we don't have enough resources to plow, to plow streets and to pave, the communities that will be impacted the most will be African-American communities. So when we update the fleet, even though it does not seem like that's a specific investment in African-American communities, it really is, because what it does is it makes sure that the whole city gets equitable services. And the only way we can make sure that the city gets equitable services is by having the material and the resources to serve the entire city. All right, last two things, and I'll turn it on to Councilman Lavelle to talk about equity. The Equity First Spending Plan, there's a, and again, we can give you copies of the handout. Sean, where at? Behind me, maybe. We have copies for those of you, and a handout of all of the expenses. But it gives you the lost revenue and how the federal government calculated this amount. They didn't just give us an amount, they used these major categories to determine where our lost resources were. And you see, you know, the $167 million a year that they think we've lost, and it shows where those categories come from, public safety, community health, negative economic thing, broad-based water administration, and that's where all those kind of, you see how we're going to make up those funds in the broad-based categories. And then the next slide talks about, okay, we have this money, $300 million, how are we going to spend it over the next few years? And these are the big bucket list of things, the top things. Operating budget, capital improvement, special project to remove lead paint, the URA, which is going to be the vehicle to provide affordable housing and provide business opportunities, especially in communities of color. We're going to help the parking authority, and that's just a little bit, because really what we're going to do is tell the parking authority not pay us its contribution, all right? We cannot give them directly $2 or $3 million, so what we're going to do is forego some of their payments because the parking authority has been absolutely hit hard by the pandemic because people have been working from home, and our garages are empty. One Pittsburgh, that's the guaranteed income program, where we're going to get some primarily single mothers with kids and give them a monthly stipend, right? And because we know when they use those monthly stipends, it does not go to the casino or to partying, but they actually use the money to pay for their children, to give quality after-school programs for their kids, or healthier food for them. And then those are the totals and the percentages of where it is going from. And so that's my part of the presentation. I will hand the mic over to Councilman Lavelle, and he'll specifically talk about areas of equity.
Madam President, also wanted me to remind you that there are refreshments by the door when you came in, so please help yourself to them. So as Reverend Burgess already mentioned, part of what we wanted to do was ensure that the dollars that we're allocating go into the neighborhoods that he mentioned that have historically not seen their fair share of investment, and we wanted to invest in those places as well as the people to the greatest extent possible. So within our operating budget allocation, we have approximately close to $175 million that have been put into our plan. First and foremost, when we look at our neighborhoods, we want every neighborhood to be a clean and safe neighborhood. And this plan dedicates $13 million to replace the city's aging vehicle fleet, including those updated by the Department of Public Works to help improve, as Reverend Burgess mentioned, patching potholes, removing snow, treating the roads, sweeping the streets, and maintaining catch basins to help prevent people's basements from flooding and rain events, which occurs many times over in many parts of our city. In addition to that, this plan dedicates $18 million to vacant property maintenance. Some neighborhoods do not have this problem, but in speaking for myself, one of the main calls we get is can you please maintain vacant lots? If you've paid any attention to our most recent city council meetings, we've been having a conversation about vacant lots, vacant property, and how to maintain it. So this plan does indeed address that. By providing the $18 million, $6 million will go to our city-owned vacant property maintenance, the demolition of unsafe structures, which is $2 million, which has been chronically underfunded for decades, as well as our Pittsburgh Land Bank, which we now have staff and will be able to operationalize. In addition to that, we also have heard over the last year about ensuring that we have more social services that decrease police interaction. And so this plan dedicates $10 million to the Office of Community Services to provide social services to residents in distress and diminish the chance for unnecessary interaction with law enforcement. And again, this was an initiative that we heard for over the course of a year and a half that this was critical and needed to our city. Then we move into our capital budget, which is approximately close to $60 million that we have allocated. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure that our city, our, excuse me, our children and our residents have safe places to go for their children. If you've ever been to any one of our rec centers across the city, you will know that most of them are tremendously aging. Therefore, we're dedicating $20 million to upgrade facilities across our city, and I'll let you read them all for yourself, some of which we are actually building new, some of which we are sort of gut rehabbing and totally renovating, some of which these dollars also go to funding gaps that COVID created. So as an example, in my district, the Robert E. Williams Building, we're building brand-new, but due to COVID, we now have an additional $0.5 million gap. So these dollars are funding those additional projects that were already budgeted within our previous budgets. Then we dedicated $17,500,000 to PWSA. We want to ensure that everyone has clean, safe, affordable drinking water, and in doing so, we are working to protect the public's health by continuing to replace lead water lines, as well as we're preventing runner rate increases by allowing PWSA to avoid paying $43 million in debt service to borrow the same amount of money to do this needed work. If they had to borrow that money, our residents would absolutely see rate increases. To avoid that burden on the residents, we're putting that money in. We're also moving approximately $75 million over to our Urban Redevelopment Authority, which will be broken down into a number of different buckets. First, we're dedicating $22 million to OwnPGH. OwnPGH is an initiative, excuse me, to renovate vacant homes and sell them to residents and families with low and moderate incomes to foster homeownership. One of our main goals and objectives is how can we move as many residents, especially African-American residents, into homeownership, and this will support those initiatives. We are also moving, what does it say, $5 million into another pot of funding to actually save existing affordable housing, because it is much less expensive to preserve housing than it is to build new housing. We've already spoken about the land bank, we've spoken about the money that we want to set aside to preserve buildings, now we're going to put money into a program to help people renovate those buildings and turn them into affordable housing. This also dedicates $5 million to establishing and expanding community land trusts so that the residents are actually going to be owners of the land and not the developers. We also allocate an additional $10 million to help people qualify to pay their rent and help pay their utility bills. You all may have seen when we launched an initiative called Avenues of Hope. This plan dedicates $7 million to rebuild black business districts, excuse me, across our city, and you can clearly see the seven for yourself, but what we openly acknowledged for some time is that we have to create and help build more wealth within our African-American community, and this plan begins to do so. Lastly, we're putting $2.5 million into OnePGH, which is the nonprofit that is going to be used to provide the $2.5 million in guaranteed basic income pilot initiative. Due to state law, the city is limited on how we're able to provide direct payment to assist people. Therefore, we have to put it through a nonprofit, and this is that initiative. We firmly believe, and I believe I can speak for my colleagues on council, that we have done the best to, one, be good stewards of the money based upon what the federal government says on how we can spend it, but then also do so in a way that is equitable for our city at large.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Reverend Burgess. You did a great job. Okay, with that said, we're going to go on to our registered speakers, and we have Dr. Rudiak first. You can go to the mic there if you want to, or do you want to bring it over to them? If you could bring it over to them, that'd be better. I don't want them to have to stand with their back to the camera.
I think I can just.
Oh. It's okay? It's okay if you take it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, just, maybe she wants to face the camera, not us. I don't know if you want your back on the camera, it's up to you. However, you feel most comfortable.
Members of city council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the use of American Rescue Plan Act monies. My name is Barbara Rudiak, and I'm the president of the South Side Community Council. As you are no doubt aware, the South Side Flats neighborhood is undergoing a challenging time this spring/summer as the city opens up after the COVID closures of 2020. East Carson Street from 10th to 18th has become unmanageable on Thursday through Sundays. For many, it has also become quite dangerous. Patrons of the bars and those that are partying in the streets have assaulted and/or robbed others on the street. They have also ventured into the residential areas to get their cars and engage in loud conversation, fistfights, some of which have ended in shootings. For years, there's been problems with East Carson Street Business District. When the South Side Local Development Company dissolved, it stated that it had done so because South Side had arrived. Unfortunately, the community, businesses, and residents were left with no one other than volunteer organizations to tend to the needs of the community, which have been difficult to do. With no one working on behalf of East Carson Street, we are seeing quite a few massage parlors, tattoo shops, vape shops, nightclubs, and empty storefronts. Over the years, the South Side Community Council has reached out to foundations and others for funding a Main Street manager, but to no avail. A few years ago, we worked with the URA and Bruce Kraus's office on a Carson Street study. After receiving the results of the study, we were unable to follow through with the next steps because there was no one leading the work other than overworked URA staff and community volunteers. Currently, we as a council have applied for a Neighborhood Economic Development Grant, which would provide us with $50,000 each year for four years for a total of $200,000 to support a Main Street manager. Although we think we've stated our case for the funds very well, we're aware that other community organizations feel as deserving of this one grant. If we are fortunate to receive it, we would need an additional $200,000 in order to find a qualified person to fill the position. This funding could very well assist us with our East Carson Street challenges, coupled with public safety plans. Turning back to the current East Carson Street challenges, it's my understanding that the city is planning to use some funds for city jobs that could have been cut if federal funding was not received. It's our hope that these city jobs could include positions that focus on South Side enforcement of occupancy limits in bars, determining if bars' operating windows need to be closed because of loud music, and to comply with noise ordinances, and enforcement officers to enforce residential permit parking in the residential areas of the South Side. In addition, street lighting, one block off of East Carson Street needs to be updated to improve pedestrian safety and decrease the potential for crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rudiak. Our next speaker is Kitsey McNally. Let's see here, Tim Stevens, and I know he's not here yet, at least. Betty Pickett. Gordon Sullivan. Hi, Mr. Sullivan. Thanks for joining us.
I'm going to the town community council.
Here, come to the mic, please, so the TV can hear.
Just going through a couple here. It shows like $1.7 million for Phillips Rec. That building in the pool is literally falling apart. So I mean, I don't know if you guys want to go up and take a look at it yourself, but that's fine. Couple other things on here, when it says it's going to hire more people. I worked 32 years in Public Works and Refuge, so I know it's like, well, I started in '78, I burlap, I don't know if you guys remember that with the sack. And I see these rubbishmen now, especially working a buyer, where there's two guys in a truck, there's supposed to be three. And you can't get people to go haul rubbish for 13 bucks an hour to start out, so I think, and they've been screwed for many years in their contracts, same as Public Works. But anyhow, to move on, Carrick Business District needs redone. I know you want to do other districts. We have probably 70 empty storefronts up, I would have a con, but we're going to start doing that, too. Brazile Road needs to be redone because they've done every other road in the South Hills. You know, this is getting done, just Carr Street again, they did, it was up at Brookline Boulevard, they did Broadway, and Brazile Road is a main road that goes all the way from, you know, starts at 18th Street all the way to Brazile, PA. But we want it done from the border of Mount Oliver to the border of Brentwood. I mean, the road needs redone, you know, new street, like, just like they did everywhere else, new sidewalks, you know, something to do with the storefronts, because we're just, Esther Candy's closed now, the One Pizza Shop, I don't know if it just closed because of this or what, but they've only been open a couple of years, they're gone. I mean, just, there's so many empty storefronts, it's just, it's horrible. And I mean, we're trying to do our part, I mean, just, we're volunteer. I mean, we work, we try to bust our butt. A couple other ones here, Public Works Division, I don't think it's even started yet. I've redone it way before, I understand the fourth division. I worked at Public Works. I've driven years ago when they run out of salt from Baratic Avenue to 51, the salt dome. And if you ever go through, you've probably never gone through the tunnel with chains on, it's something you on, it's something you really don't want to hear. But to build that division, no dump, first of all, and no salt dump, even though it went out closer, you can still go back and forth. It's just, I don't know what I mean, just, you know, working in the public works is incomprehensible. Okay, the other part of the Capitol, we want to tear a building down. I thought I had pictures on my phone, I must delete them. There was a big fire in a big apartment building on Spencer Avenue a year ago, over a year ago. And so it was up, it's been condemned, they were both condemned, this right to the building next door. And if you, I've got pictures, I'll take them, send them to you somehow if you want. But the wall on the one side that's on the corner of Almore and Spencer, that building's going to fall. I mean, there's no doubt. I have a couple contractors that looked at it. It's a matter of time before they fall. And if it goes over to the side, it's going to go all the way across the street because it's a three-story, but it's a brick wall. And it's actually buckling in and buckling out. So there's one there, and it might not be torn down until next year. And it needs torn down now, before somebody gets hurt. But I guess it's basically it, and I'm pretty much out of time. New vehicles at Public Works would really help, too. I drove it for years, we had a lot of broke-down vehicles. In fact, all the years I worked there, 2005 is the first year they got the big new international dumps. That's the first time.
We'll continue to talk about it after we hear from the registered speakers. We'll continue to talk, if you want to stay.
Okay. All right, I've run out of time, now you get three minutes, but I'll.
No, you don't get three minutes here. No, you don't get three minutes here. As Councilmember said, where's the timer? I said I'm giving them one minute. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. It's so nice to meet you in person. Thank you.
Good to meet you, too, Councilwoman Smith. Greetings and good day. My title's Ikona Halmakena. I'm the Grand Inca of the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I'm glad to be before you, City Councilmembers, some of you I have met personally, some I have not. But with no further ado, I wanted to speak about how you can use the funds to directly impact the city's inner-city neighborhoods who are stricken with gun violence. And I say that because it's starting to spill over into areas that are not used to seeing gun violence, and we've seen that here this past week with the triple shooting right here on the Southside. And I can only imagine that the people of the Southside, the residents, the citizens, are pretty sick of it. And that's most likely due to the fact that a lot of the quote-unquote "black businesses", bar owners, have been kind of faded out. A lot of the black businesses, bar owners, not that I came here to talk about bars, but it's like, those people are flooding the Southside because there aren't many establishments for our people to go to. But there needs to be an action plan to stop the bloodshed in the inner city. COVID did nothing more than expose the already growing problem in the city. It can't continue to flood the same organizations with funds because they obviously aren't making the impact that they need to make. The violence is spilling over into areas that are not usually subject to this violence. We must do something different. I urge you, City Councilmembers, to invest in the youth, to teach them skill sets that are reasonable for the youth to envision a brighter future for our youth, allowing funds to support them, to provide mentorships, and also trades. Trades are something that were very prevalent in the middle schools here in Pittsburgh, and they have been erased. Most of the schools that did provide trades are gone. And so if we focus the youth in on the youth, then perhaps we can save these future generations from the violence that plagues us in the city. And I thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you so much. And I'm going to mention that we're also joined by School Board Member Veronica Edwards. Apiala? Did I say that correct? If I didn't, please correct me. Please correct me when you come to the mic. I apologize.
Greetings. How's everyone?
Hi.
My title is pronounced Apiala.
Apiala.
Hubahanu. I am the Oracle of the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal People. Most of my focus is in education. Teach engineering, electrical, fiber optic, audio engineering. And I like to say that within two blocks of my home, there's 20 abandoned homes. Walk two blocks this way, two, you know, just a two-block square. And I remember growing up, we had trades. And there's a lot of skilled people in our communities that could teach trades. You don't need a school, per se. You need people who are qualified and people who have skills. And I think we need to address some of these people who have skills that can teach by empowering them and giving them the resources to be able to go in the neighborhoods they live in, look at the empty houses that are there, and begin to rethink what these neighborhoods could look like. Begin to rethink the streets that the children have to walk up and down. You have weeds growing up through the sidewalk, you have weeds growing up through the basements of buildings sticking out. I mean, it's really an eyesore, and for children to walk this route every day, whether it's to the store or to school, they don't see any hope. And if we're all adults, and this is the imagery we're showing our children, there's a problem because we are later going to take those same children and lock them up for bad behavior or not having viable places to spend their time or skills or whatever have you. So we can nip all of that in the bud by rethinking just what this land was supposed to be about. This was the land of the free. As an Aboriginal, I know, because I have the history of my entire family, on this land. And the more commerce, and the more infrastructure, and the more taxation, you have people who just don't want to be a part of that anymore. So what are they going to do to survive? They don't have skills, and they can't go on and stand on their own two feet. What are they going to do to survive? So the funds that are available, we need to start targeting people in our neighborhoods who have skills, who could take some of this funding and revitalize the neighborhoods, the streets. I don't have to wait for the city to come and pave my street. Equipment's available, we have skills, we know how to do it, we have people who know how to pour concrete, we have people who know how to build houses, reframe houses, whatever have you. We just need the resources. Okay? I thank everyone for my time, and appreciate you listening.
Thank you so much for coming down and for your comments. Now, I'm going to turn over. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? I saw your hand first, and then I saw somebody in the back. And we're going to give you just a couple of minutes because we've got with the registered speakers.
Good evening, everyone. I want to look right into this camera. I want y'all to know that this isn't a community meeting.
Excuse me. Please turn to the council.
No, I'm talking to the TV. You want me to talk to you and ask you a question? The question I got for you is, how much money was spent on advertising today's community meeting? How much money? Can you give me an answer? Because it doesn't look like there's too many people here, and this doesn't look like a community to me. It looks like a group of a few people. Remember I said this to you? Y'all spent $200,000 for an agency to consult if this plan would work or not. Have you spun anything close to that amount advertising these community meetings? You're the only one who even retweets the announcements of these community meetings. No one else does. What's going on with that? That should be a requirement of all of you. All of you should be on your social networks announcing this event. Wait a minute.
No, no.
You had your, yes, wait a minute. No, don't you no-no me. I got the mic.
And you're going to have the sergeant-at-arms.
No, he ain't going to touch me. He ain't going to touch what? What? Watch, watch what?
All right, calm down, calm down. This is why we're not doing these.
No, this is why we are doing this, because this is not inclusive. This is not inclusive. No, I don't have to come with you. I came here to speak to them. Ain't no shut it down.
We're going to dismiss the meeting in a second if.
Listen, you know who I am? I'm Will Parker. I'm running for mayor. Listen, back up. I got something to say to them, and they're not going to stop me from speaking.
Can I just say, sir, we're trying to have a conversation.
And I'm trying to have a conversation with you all, too.
And I hear what you're saying.
Okay, well, let me speak.
But I want you to calm down and talk.
I'm calming down. You keep telling me no, no, and you trying to interrupt me, but ain't going to be no interruptions when it comes to $335 million. I'm going to speak, and I'm going to speak loud, and you're going to hear me clear. Because this is what happens when y'all get together and your special partnerships, like you said, Ricky Burgess, this is what happens. This is the outcome. People are outraged. I don't care about that. Listen, tell them units, my name is William Parker, I'm running for mayor, I'm on the ballot. Let them put their hands on me and put that on the news. Go ahead. Because I'm the one who was down here speaking up for my community.
All right.
Okay? So I want everybody at home to pay attention to what's going on. These people are not being inclusive with the money. And we need to make sure that these community meetings are advertised properly. They need to invest in them, and we need the equity layout behind this funding. Yes, they want to build this, that, and the third. But who's going to build it? What contractors? Who are they going to spend the money with?
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
No, your time is up.
Next speaker, please.
You're looking at the next mayor of Pittsburgh, whether you want to believe it or not.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you for your time. My name's Tony Moreno. These are press releases from last year and this year, equalling $216 million of money that's outside of the budget from grants. Nobody knows where that money's being spent because when you go out to these areas that are talked about in Hazelwood and Homewood, it is a nightmare. There's people suffering in these communities, and they need help. Mr. Burgess, I know that you received $5.5 million to bring street activists to stop crime, for social workers to come out outside of the Pittsburgh Police Training Budget. That was in November. We see this massive rash of violence happening right now across our city and specifically here on the Southside. It is dangerous. We need to enact our law enforcement officers. We are the most highly trained officers in this country. We are empathetic, we are professional. I'm saying "we" like I'm still there. They are professional and empathetic and professional at the highest level. You need to utilize those police officers. Rerouting traffic, as we saw, does not work. Depolicing does not work. We are in a tragic situation across our city right now. We are losing police officers at a rate that has never happened before. We are now losing more police officers to resignation than we are to retirement, and those are first-year officers. We do not know how much it costs because nobody will give us the number, what it is to train an officer, and they are going out to different areas. Our pension fund is in trouble because it is not safe downtown. We do not have an answer for the lack of parking. Parking's going to, the park tax, parking tax, is what funds our pension on the municipal officer and firefighter, and that's going to implode. There is no answer there. They are not able to tell me how that is going to be fixed. So if we can address those, I would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and your waiting. Any other, anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Hi.
Hi. My name is Jose Gonzalez, and I'm a graduate student in social work. I'm getting my MSW. And I would just like to say that the economic theory behind the idea of not making direct payments is fundamentally flawed. It's been said that that money wouldn't go into our economy, but it's been shown over and over again that when you give people who do not have money funds, they spend it almost immediately, and so it gets reinvested almost immediately. The economic impact shows that for every dollar that you spend for a person in poverty, you get about five back into the community. It doesn't make sense. I mean, we have seen over and over and over again that austerity politics on a federal level have been dismissed out of hands. They've just been shown to not work. But on a city level, we're still sort of reproducing that ideology, one that's been discredited since the 80s. Respectfully, I'm going to have to disagree with Mr. Moreno. I don't think what our community needs are more police, but I'm also going to have to disagree with you guys. If you want to see an improvement in the quality of life in people in Pittsburgh, we need direct economic stimulus, and not through the construction of, like, luxury condos. I see that that says it's being broadcast as development, but development for who? It's not eliminating poverty to push poor people out of the city. And so I just have to say that we are not taking care of the most vulnerable people in our community. We can talk about these programs, but the thing that's going to have the most dramatic and direct impact is direct transfer of funds to poor people. And yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Is there anyone else wanting to address council? Director Edwards.
Good evening, everybody. And it is good to be in front of City Council. When you all said you were going to host these meetings, I decided to get out here and make sure all around the city that the school district recognizes that you do want to be partners. I want to be partners, and I want it all to benefit the citizens of the school district and the city. That's what we're here for. That's why I'm here, that's why you are here. So I just wrote a couple of notes. First, I thank you for holding these sessions so that people can come. We do have to advertise a little better, everybody, so that they get out into their communities and have an opportunity to talk in front of you. I want to thank you for the funds to the PWSA. They've been working in my community, they're doing good work, and we're seeing the work they're doing, and I know the neighbors appreciate it, Teresa. Thank you. And the equity plan for the first spending, bringing back safe places and spaces for our children, is number one. They have to have something to do besides hang out in the street. That's not working. They're dying. So we need to stop the violence, all we can do. And years ago, we had the Gun Task Force. It might be time to find out, you know, where all those guns are coming from. They're not manufactured in the black community, drugs aren't manufactured in the black community, but they are being brought in. So we need to get the people who are bringing them in or giving them to somebody to bring in. And for the $10 million to the Office of Community Services, I agree with that also, and I'm willing to work with you in any way possible I can. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Edwards. Anyone else? So with that said, I'm just going to let members say a few words first, but I do want to say that, Director Edwards, you're not wrong, and neither was Mr. Parker, about the comment about enough notice for the meetings. That is my responsibility, and I apologize for that. But we did do a news release for it from the clerk's office, saying that we would have these meetings. But I did it because I wanted to make sure that people knew that we, I had promised a group of people that we would have the meetings, and I didn't want to not go back. I didn't want to go back on that. I promised I would have them. But this is just the beginning of the conversation. There's other meetings, there'll be additional times and opportunities to talk to council. As Reverend Burgess and Councilwoman Lavelle pointed out, we'll also be working on the 22 budget. So I think that there's an opportunity for additional dialogue. This is just the beginning, and I hope people think of it that way. And I do apologize for not giving even additional notice, but we did the best we can with the timeframe we have. Thank you. With that said. So nothing from members. So with that said, I just want you to know that we're hearing you. I really want to have this more of a conversation, more than I wanted it as a public comment time. I wanted to be able to go back and forth and have a dialogue. But I want you to know that we did hear some of your comments and some of your concerns. I hear your concerns about Carrick, and I hear the same concerns about areas of my district as well. And as you mentioned, there were several places in your district board that did get some funding and to get some help.
Can you answer this question, Will?
Yeah.
You have a question?
Yeah, you can help me with this. My understanding of the way you talked about the parking tax diversion into the pension, my understanding is, and I'll let you sort of explain how we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, you're correct, we did the parking thing, so we raised parking rates, meters, so additional parking money, and the same amount that we raised, we put in as additional money into the pension fund. But there was a slight break, so it's not directly from the parking garages into the pension fund. When we did that machination, the state made us separate it, and also it was a good idea to, you know, today, we, what happens if no one parks, what happens if there's flying jets and cars and we don't have parking revenue? So, the same amount we raised is dedicated to the pension fund, but it doesn't necessarily have to come from parking tax, it can't come from anywhere in our general fund. So, we still did make those pension payments this year, even if parking tax is a bit short.
If it's the, the, uh, Mike Pittsburgh has a plan on disincentivizing travel by vehicle downtown to Pittsburgh, we poured down parking garages, and there's no plan to recoup those areas where that money comes into. Now, if that continues, where are we going to make up that, that budget amount that we take from parking?
Well, part of it, you know, I can explain.
It's like we're working against each other.
There's two different things, that, um, when we did the pension save, the city around 2017, 2027, starts to hit a debt cliff. That is, we will have more money to be able to dedicate ourselves to the pension. So, the reason that the parking tax was used was in actuality to be a temporal amount over a period of years until we hit the death cliff, debt cliff, of where our loans and the, the bonds we take out are fully repaid, and then the city will have, be liquid enough to increase significantly its own bond, its own payment to the pensions. So, that's why the pensions are not really in danger, because, now, if there's another, you know, pandemic or something, certainly, that takes care, that, that hurts our bottom line and our savings. But up until this year, the, the City Council and the mayor has been very conservative. We built up the fund balance for that very reason, so that we'll have money ongoingly, the pension and the obligations of those who are retired from our city, the police, fire, EMS, even the city workers, making sure that there, those obligations to those workers is one of the highest priority of our city. And so, we have, we have worked in many ways to make sure that that pension is stronger, stronger now than it's ever been in the last, what?
Uh, probably 1905?
Yeah, since it's ever been, and the plan will be even, if the city recovers from Act 47, we will have more money to put into the pensions. So, that's just, to answer your question, the, the, the lack of parking does not endanger at this moment our ability to take care of the pension.
Not at this moment, but are, do you realize that the city has cut off pension, I'm sorry, medical benefits for police widows, and they made us go into the step one process and offered us six months in COVID payments to our police widows? They dropped them, and we go back as far as 2005, and there is no money in this plan to take care of our police widows.
Okay, so.
But I'm just going to say, he, okay.
When you say we're that good, we're not, we're leaving our police.
So, I just want to say, I, I understand that there's still things that we might need to address and concerns that we have, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to.
I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate everyone coming, I just want to give everybody an opportunity to talk and make sure everybody heard one another. And I want to make sure you, Ikona, Ikona, and Veronica Edwards, Director Edwards, have a chance to meet, because you mentioned a lot about the schools, and I think it'd be great for you two to have a, if you're willing to have a little bit of a conversation, I think it'd be great to connect the two of you. Okay, I'm sorry.
You were saying, Paul, by the other side, Carrick Community Council would be more than happy to make the call, I don't know if it has to be in public or private, I mean, you know, we talked to Anthony Quaw, who is our councilman, and Bruce Pross is too, I guess part of our area, who, you know, bowled a lot of ceremony. It just, Carrick's been left alone too long, and what I forgot to say, we need to shots water, please. Allocate the money, put one out there, please. The shooting, the shooting happened on Kirk Avenue, what, a month ago, six weeks? I was about five minutes away from that shooting, walking.
Can I just say to council members, I'm responsible, I'm taking those questions. I think that we'll continue to have these meetings, but I think the next meetings will have time, a timer, even though that's not what I want, I was hoping we could sit down like we are now and have this conversation. But obviously, it didn't go exactly the way I planned, but, but at least we're having a little bit of a conversation now, but I'd rather have more of one. With that said, is there anything else from anyone here? No? Well, we're going to stay, council members are going to stay for a little bit, some of us will, if you want to come up and talk to us after that. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.